We, how can we give it, we have a resident who's been helping, helping Brian and Jennifer get us all online and stuff, and he's been, he's done a great job and, no, he's done a great job and, because that's really not his forte, his forte is computer like a programmer, you know, that's, and, he's been very good as far as donating to the village that way. So we certainly can't-
And if he charged us an hourly wage, we would not be able to afford it at all.
No, no.
Not for what he actually does.
Me neither.
We can afford you.
But I was, I was just telling Ruth Kaye and Jeff, and we were talking about it for a little bit, me and Brian and Jennifer, earlier because they had their thing, if you go, if you just Google Ford, Forward Innovation Center, you know, on your computer, you'll get the big website that they have out there for our Ford Corner and also Brook Park. And it's really, it's really something what they got out there for, you know, you could just tell the investment, what they have there. It's called Forward Innovation Center, if you just Google that, you'll get the big site and then it has Forward Innovation Center East, which is Walton Hills, and then they got Forward Innovation West, which is the Brook Park Plant, and it really just, really, it, you know, it's something, how they're marketing it.
Why did it still say it's Ford?
No, I'm, forward.
Oh, forward.
Did I say for, Forward Innovation Center?
Sorry, this thing's making a lot of noise.
Yeah. Forward, moving forward. That's fine, that's fine. Well, you know, when you see, what I put, we put in the journal, the draft project, they also call it draft, which is forward spelled backwards. De Geronimo also calls that corner their draft project, which is forward spelled backwards. That's where that came from, so when you see in the journal, like, I'll have draft, you know, but that's what De Geronimo asked us to use, you know, that was our trivia question one time was.
Yeah.
And it's, but now they're kind of starting to refer to it as the Forward Innovation Center, but they haven't given an official name yet, but it's really a, something cited. What's that? We are live, then are we ready?
Please.
If you've got it going, John, we're ready.
Right.
Okay. All right, Angela, whenever you, you're good, everybody ready? Okay. Good evening, everybody. Like to welcome everybody to the committee of the whole meeting of Tuesday, September 6th, 2022, at 7:05 PM. Also welcome to any residents that are watching us with our live stream. Just to let everybody know, we, we've had some difficulties with the camera, there was a recreation and community life meeting beforehand, before this meeting, and they filmed most of it, but there was a little issue. We think we have it resolved, though, but if there were to be a problem, we are still recording it, the village is still recording it on our DVD if anybody ever wants a copy of it, if the live stream doesn't work, but we think it's going to go well, so, just to kind of give you an update.
We have to do a new link, so I can figure out how to redirect everybody.
Okay.
But, so we're going, we're live, we're just on-
We're live, they had to go to a new, a new link, but if they typed it in, the YouTube-
They should fill me a September 6th meeting, right, we'll see two of them, so.
Right. So, right, if you, if the link isn't on our website, just type in COW mini Walton Hills, September 6th, and it will come up, and there might be two, just pick the one that seems to be working, so. Okay. Whenever you're ready, Angela, we can do roll call.
Councilwoman Neelton?
Present.
Councilwoman Breder Miller?
Here.
Councilwoman Allen?
Here.
Councilwoman Reed?
Here.
Councilwoman Spitzman?
Here.
All council president, along with our fiscal officer, Angelo, Angelo Ravae, and our law director, John Montello. Anybody have any comments related to the agenda items? We'll get through the legislation, and if anybody else has any comments at that time, we can, we can always address them then. What am I missing there? Okay, there we go. All right. So legislation, I know we got quite a few things on here, we can also talk about them next week, some of our housekeeping, when we get back, there's always quite a few things, so. First one is ordinance 2022-8, which is property assessments, something we do every year. Oh, here's probably the problem.
This was my, it's too close here.
And I have my phone too close. All these electronic, electronic prompts. Okay, do we want to touch base on the property assessments, Angela? It's really just something we do every year?
Absolutely, and I didn't even put the exhibit in, I apologize, we'll have that in for next week, I gotta just finish the spreadsheet, so this just reiterates the $42 per quarter for trash, and then it also adds on for anyone who needed assessments for tree trimming, or lawn abatement, or anything like that. So it's basically housekeeping, different people added on for the extras probably, but there you go, right?
And we'll have the exhibit for you next COW meeting.
Which is just basically our giant list of parcels.
Does that, you know the date that has to, do we have to have that?
Um, I believe by September, end of September, I want to say the 30th.
So that might be something-
So, yeah, so we would like to-
Get that passed, yeah, for suspension. Any questions on that?
Mayor Colerat?
Yes.
Yeah, I did have one, a couple of questions, so, and it was, one, it was around Exhibit A, I was looking for Exhibit A, so that Exhibit A, that shows, that showed the actual dollar amount of the-
It's literally a list of all our parcels.
Okay. So I know, I know we had discussion around this last year, and one of the questions that we talked about was, how much time is, are the residents given, how much notice, or how many times, what is considered due or proper notice?
As far as, like, they had lawn abatement-
Yes.
-that we had to take care of.
Right.
I believe that Lisa and Rob would send out at least two notices, so they've got a couple of months, you know what I'm saying, because then that, this doesn't go until September, so they could have been getting lawn abatement early spring through now, and if they haven't paid, so I, I would like to guess that they get at least two notices.
If not more.
Yeah, yeah, we can double check that with Lisa, but I'm confident-
Because before they get a notice, they get a, a warning.
Yeah, we get the bill out, then we would get another, you know, second notice, yeah.
I could, I could ask Rob, I can get those details for the next meeting.
Yeah, I think we asked last term, I thought, because I don't remember.
Right. I know we give more than most communities timeframe, we're very, you know, very fair.
Yeah.
But I, I can let you know, we'll, we'll get that, I'll get that timeframe from Rob.
I can, like, she, so she'll see if she's got me timed.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that. Any other questions on that? So we got Exhibit A, and we'll have detailed information about timeframe and what warrants it going on there. Lot of times it's houses that are in, even in foreclosure, or whatever, and we're trying to, you know, get them to cut the grass, and then whoever purchases the house, you know, at the time of the settlement, at the time of closure, they have to, whether it's the seller or the buyer, has to square with the village because there's a lien on it. But in some ways, that's the only way for us to get our, our money back. We cut some properties here and continue to cut them, and it's not fair to all of us, so.
Mr. Mayor.
You gotta assess them somehow to recoup our labor, so, yeah.
Yeah, just one, Angela, is that-
Oh, yes, we do need to update that.
2022?
2022, it is number eight, and I just have to update your 2022, thank you for reminding me, Mary reminded me when she made copy. So the ordinance number will be 2022-8.
And then Section 1, Angela, should that be through September 2022, or 2021, that was in Section 1, since we're talking about it now? I was gonna ask you later, but since we're on it, it says, so let's-
Yes, so any charges that were incurred through September of this year, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions related to ordinance 2022-8? Any residents have any comments, or any residents that are watching our live stream?
Yeah, I did put the link in the comments of the old link.
Okay.
So hopefully people find us, it does say there's four people watching, so.
Good.
Yeah, there was only one before.
I had a resident that was asking me, there was only 10 seconds.
Yeah, so hopefully they can see that link and, and hit that.
Any residents that are, well, they were, they're watching, they don't need me.
We can pick one up.
They're not looking for the link, do they? Okay, item B, Resolution 2022-19, the tax rate. Want to just touch base on that?
Yep, this is the yearly certification of the three inside mills that were passed back in, I want to say 14 or 17, and nothing's changed, we haven't increased anything, so we just need to send it over each year for it to stay in effect.
Just have to send it over to the county and, and file it and certify it, correct?
Yes.
But it's the same as it's been, no increase, three mills. Any questions related to that? Any questions from the audience related to that resolution? Okay, how about from anybody live? Any questions from any residents watching it live?
Not yet.
Okay. I'll wait a few minutes, that's, oh, there's a few minutes behind. Okay, since there's no questions there, we'll move on to item C, Resolution 2022-20, that's the OPWC grant for 2023. As you know, we did use OPWC grant for what we paid on Alexander Road this year, this is legislation authorizing the mayor, myself, to go out and apply for this grant, along with the engineer, and what this is for is Alexander Road Phase 3, the part from Dunham Road to our borderline, and then also you'll see Barclay Estates resurfacing on there, okay? Joe said, Mayor, I wanted to talk to you, he talked to me and Rob, he said, because you've heard us say it, very seldom do you get grants, or even get grants for the secondary roads, he said they're loosening up a little bit, and he was told by other engineers, maybe us combining it, there might be a chance. So, we did add it, so that's a good thing, we'll see what happens. I was concerned whether it would hurt our points or our scoring with finishing Alexander Road, because I think that's important, we all know, when you get to the west end of the village, especially closer to Valley View, it's pretty bad there, so we'd like to have all of Alexander done, it would be nice. This job just came out really nice, the part from the Village Hall, from Walton down to our border there is nice, so, but he said, he don't think it's gonna be a problem, so it's added. So this is authorizing the office here to apply for that grant.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can they grant the Alexander Road Phase 3 resurfacing and say you're not going to get any money for Barclay, or is it an all or nothing effect?
I, from, and I'll have to clear that, I can get that cleared up, from what I understand, with Joe, yes, they could.
Okay.
Yep, mhm, they could separate them out, but I will ask that. I didn't have Joe or Rob, Rob was off today, so certainly didn't want him to come in, but Joe, I figured if we have any questions, you know, and we need him at this meeting or the next meeting, then we'll make that happen, but otherwise, yeah, I'll ask more about that.
Mayor Colerat?
Yes.
So on this Phase 3 of Dunham, I'm sorry, Alexander Road?
Yes.
Is there also a Cuyahoga County grant application process for, for the Alexander Road portion?
Yeah, I don't think that is up right now, Ray, I'll, I'll find out, we did apply before for the, you know, for what we did here, we got Cuyahoga County money, too, so I just don't know if that, this is, we, it's time for us to apply for this one, and he got the application, I can find out about that one, you know, if that's coming up. Because we certainly would apply for that, too.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Did, I think that one was almost a year after we applied for this one, there was quite a bit of time in between, but we were given so many years with this OPWC grant to use it.
Well-
They weren't, they weren't right on, they weren't right on top of each other, I know that.
Right.
It wasn't at the same time.
Yeah, it, it, if my recollection, that the county money came in first, the county awards came in first, and then it was just this year that the, after reapplying several times, that the state money came through, which half of it was, what, 125,000 was a grant, and the other was a loan.
Loan, yep.
So 250 of that $495,000 project actually came from Cuyahoga County, was sitting, waiting on the answer from the state, so.
Well, I just knew, I remembered that they weren't at the same time.
No.
You know, that there was some time between them.
The county did contribute very significantly, actually 50% to the project.
I wonder if they contributed in the first phase, so that may not be something that's at the phase.
Right, it might, yeah, it might not be every, I could find out, we'll, we'll find that out, because we won't miss it. We've been, you know, we've been doing very, very well, this administration and this council here with grants, in fact, we put a list together, we've done really, really well, we've, you know, what we've applied for, we've gotten a lot of them, says a lot about sugaring valley engineering, and, and I know Brian, you, you with the recreation grant, and you've tried a lot, this one went through, so perseverance helps, too, but we've done well, so, yeah, I'll, I'll find out about that.
Mayor Colerat?
Yes.
If I want to add one more comment, this Phase 3 project has also been put on the, I brought it, put it on the table, at a Cuyahoga County Greenwaze Partner, Cuyahoga County Planning Commission, as a potential resource, should there be additional bike lanes in Walton Hills for that section of Alexander Road, being, especially being that that section of Alexander Road is a connector between Summit County Bike and Hike Metro Parks and directly into the Cuyahoga Valley National Park, so, this Phase 3 project is on the radar screen of the Cuyahoga Greenwaze Partners, who are trying to, you know, make more linkages, so there may be some, there potentially could be some additional grant funding money available.
Well, we welcome that, I appreciate you making them aware of it and putting it on there, and we'll take all the pre-money we can, right?
Absolutely.
Especially if it's a good, a good, good thing, and good, good for the village. So I'll find out about that, so what do we have there? I'll find out about the Cuyahoga County grant, then I'll find out about the separation of Barclay and Alexander Road in Hollyaward, okay? Find that out from Joe, too. Any questions on Resolution 2022-20, the OPWC grant for 2023? We will move on, any questions from any residents watching the live stream?
Not yet.
Okay, give it a minute or so, we just give it a minute or so, because the live stream's a little bit behind, if you were watching it, it, it trails a little bit. I don't think so. Resolution, item D, Resolution 2022-21, Cuyahoga County All Hazard Mitigation Plan, that is another housekeeping thing that we do every year, correct?
Every five years.
Every five years, is it, Angela?
Correct, so 2017 was the last time one was-
Any?
Which the mitigation plan itself comes out of police and dispatch, Shannon works on that, so we have, there's an actual plan in place, and then legislation goes through, every five years we update that plan and pass legislation.
And so we're due, do you know when we have to have that completed?
This needs to be sent in, what did they say?
I got it, yeah, I'm trying to see.
I know, it's in my email from Shannon, I apologize.
That's okay, I'll just write, we'll get the date for it, for-
It, it, it's gonna either be end of September, or beginning of, like, mid-October.
Excuse me, okay.
Maybe we-
Date will be submitted. Yeah, it might be, I don't remember. Anybody have any questions relating to that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So is there a current plan, or is a new plan, is it a new plan that's being worked on?
There's a current plan from 2017, and then last year Shannon started working on the new one, knowing the renewal was coming.
Okay, so we will be able to see that?
Um, yeah, let me ask her for a copy of that updated plan, I might even have a copy in my email, but, yeah.
Yeah, we, I can get that for you.
Yep.
Chief has that, too. Any residents have anything, any questions related to that, item D? Anybody watching live stream have any questions related to item D?
No.
Okay.
Not so far.
Yes, go ahead.
In Section 1, I see you probably have to sign the plan, correct?
Yes.
So, it was to add a sentence, maybe, and here by authorized the mayor to sign any documents regarding, you know, implementation of said plan, just, you know.
All right, you can, if you want to-
I think you'd like, I think that's a good practice.
I, I agree.
Maybe we'll just add that sentence, make that kind of-
Okay. Where would you put it?
In Section 1, just, and here by authorized, after the first sentence, and here by authorized the mayor to sign any documents regarding-
Gotcha.
...implementation of said plan. We'll check to see if the chief has to sign it, I'm pretty sure you have to, you are the chief.
Yeah, so I have to sign it, but, yeah, he might have to sign it, too, we'll check my signature and chief's. Any other questions related to that, item D? Okay, we'll move on to item E, Resolution 2022-22, Property Tax Advances. Angela, I'll let you explain that.
This, we have not really been passing yearly, I don't know if it has to be passed yearly or not, really, the county hasn't necessarily asked, but we started to receive advances on the property tax money, I want to say in 2018, so, Mr. Montello brought it to my attention, and I did find our older piece of legislation and thought, well, why not, let's just go ahead and pass it, so that, you know, we're on record as saying that, yes, we are taking that advantage, so when it comes time for our distributions to be due, we've already gotten just a little bit, and then they subtract that out from what, you know, and that's going to be, so that way we're kind of getting just a little bit all throughout the year, instead of waiting on the two distribution, on the two main
So, John, Mr. Montello, you just felt it would be good practice?
Yes, yes.
Get back, okay.
And I think it actually is probably an employer.
Okay.
But I, again, they haven't bothered us about it, but-
I've never seen anything-
You never know, the next county official will be here.
Exactly.
All right.
Well, that will be changing soon, okay. Okay. Anybody have any questions related to that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Angela, could you explain that just a little bit more exactly?
Right, so property taxes, the distributions that come to the city for the general fund, the police pension fund, and any special assessments, would normally come to us in two chunks, let's call it $215,000 twice a year, instead of us having to wait for that money to come in, which is typically July, no, I shouldn't say, like, let's call it June and November, we get like a $30,000 distribution, and then we might get another $26,000 distribution, and then when it's time for the actual distribution that would go out, you know, per the regular prescribed time, then those amounts that they put ahead of, are deducted, and so we get, you know, we're made whole at that time with the rest that would be due to us, because as you know, property taxes are in arrears anyway, so basically, the last batch we received was already only second half settlement from 2021, so even though we're already in mid-2022, so that just allows us to have the stream a little more steady throughout the year from the county on the property taxes, than, rather than wait for the two distributions. And I don't know if that program, Mr. Montello, you might know if that program's always been around, but I know we didn't start taking advantage of it until after I had arrived, so I, that's why I feel like 2018's the first year we had advances.
It's, it's been around for a while, it's just they're, they're advancing us the tax money, they know, based on our history of, the, you know, taxes we received, it's pretty clear that they could advance, and, you know, we just be, they're not gonna just give us a little bit of monitoring base on what we've received.
Right, they're not advancing the whole half.
We just get a little sooner, in case we need it, in case we, we're doing well, but it's always, always better to have a little stream in the pocket.
And if we do do it, we certainly want the legislation in place.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions? That will be on the agenda for next week, too, if any other questions have come up related to that. Any questions from anybody, any residents? How about any residents that are watching the live stream?
None on the live stream.
Okay, we have item F, which is Resolution 2022-23, Community Parks Recreation and Conservation Project Grants. I will let Mr. Spitznagle and his committee talk about it a little bit, I know they did have a committee, a committee meeting at 5:30 today to 6:30, which I think that item was on your agenda at that time, it's a grant that you probably heard us talk about quite a bit before we recessed, and we're very happy Mr. Spitznagle was involved in offering it and filling out the, the application, and we did receive the grant, so, for $58,000, and I-
Forty.
Forty, that's right, and we added, we, we said we would put in eight, so about 56, so I don't know if the committee want, Brian, you want to talk about that a little bit, and-
Sure, thank you.
Since you guys just discussed it.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. There's, we did, as Mayor said, we, we did receive this grant, we received an email from the authorizing agent, oh, thank you, and there's a couple of steps that we have to do in, in doing this, the first is that we have to fill out, we, probably being the fiscal officer, because it, it, it deals, it's a package that deals with state bond eligibility requirements, and, you know, tax exempt entity and things like that, and once that's done, they go ahead and they authorize the funds, and- and, uh, we can draw on those funds if we need to or want to through, through the project. And then of course at the end, anything that, that is left over is subtracted from what, you know, what they already gave us. I did speak with Mr. Kalman, our safety, or our.
Service.
Yeah, thank you, service director today and he's going to come up with us with, with more detailed, now what, what a more detailed project of of the exact fixes that we're going to put in place. What this entails is resurfacing, uh, the current tennis courts, repainting the current tennis courts as tennis courts and pickleball courts and resurfacing part of the area in the lower asphalted area where the current RC racetrack is in the batting cages. Uh, we're going to look at the batting cages and the areas you just walked in to see what needs the most work to get the most bang for our buck. In that way, also if, uh, pickleball courts take off and we have a lot of, uh, a lot of residents utilizing them, we can then have a surface, another surface in which to put another court and use, you know, whether that's in the batting cage area or that first area over there. We'd have that surface to do that in the future. So that's where it stands right now and the committee's going to get with Rob and I, I also asked him generally if, if in his thinking about this project, we'd of course like to get it done early spring so people can use the courts and have a full season with that. If it, in his recommendation, would it be easier or better to do part of it now, like take out the, what, the bad asphalt in the current tennis area or what, or just leave it and do it all at once? So he's gonna, he's gonna think about that and suppliers have to be contacted and things like that, so we've got some homework to do, but looking up, we've got some good, uh, good things coming for next year. It's gonna be good. Mr. Kalman did tell me today that there is another O, O, OPWC grant that Mr. Sheehy told him about which would be also for the park, Mr. Kalman would like to redo the walking path. And in his general estimation, that would be around $50,000. So I told him that I would be glad to work on that with him. You know, do whatever I need to do to submit that on behalf of the village and hopefully that'll come about and we can get a new walking path throughout the, throughout the park.
Which is used, we all know.
It is used.
Probably more than anything up there. So that walking path, people are constantly, our residents using that path, it's marked for how many times you go around, equal mile and it's, uh, it is used.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
As, as a councilperson and a resident, I'd like to thank Mr. Spitznagle. He goes after these grants over the years. I mean, I, when I was on council or not on council and I'd like to congratulate him on this one, $48,000. It's pretty substantial.
Thank you. Thank, yeah, I agree. And with that said, I know, Mr. Spitznagle, correct what I said earlier, we, the village, were allocating $8,000, that was part of the grant.
Yes.
So they, to help with the scoring of it, to show that we have an interest putting some skin in the game. But I know just talking to the committee and talking to council and, and with Rob, we're gonna try to make that go as far as we can and maybe even add more when we start to do the budget, see how council feels. Some of that stuff, Rob feels maybe if they have the time, the service department, maybe they'll self-perform some of it to be able to spread that grant. Um, it just depends, I, I just say with caution because the service department is, is busy too out there with a lot of things that we got going on, but you know, we have some good employees who can self-perform some of that work up there to maybe stretch that, that grant. So we'll see how that goes to.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
As we've said in the committee meeting before, the wording in the grant is gives a description of the grant project, but it's, it, it does give leeway to other things within that area, rehabilitation of the multi-use facility, things like that, so. Uh, if there, hopefully there are funds left over, the, the estimate was made by cost estimates from Rob Kalman. So hopefully we can stretch that and do some extra things down there that need to be done.
Good.
Thank you.
Very, was very happy, it was nice when it came through, it's always nice to get word on any of those grants or any free money or any programs out there. Um, with that said, I, I know a lot of people keep asking and I know we talked about it before we recessed about the sidewalk. We do know that the the draft group, which is DeGeronimo, uh, Scanel and Weston, they are going to put a sidewalk in front of that whole project from the beginning of their property to the corner, the end of the property. And we did apply, uh, for, uh, money to for the sidewalk from the other side in front of Cummings to the bridge through District Six for the, our, our money. That application had to be in last Friday. We did complete that before that and we did apply for that. That was a big project. Actually, our council representative, Jack Schron for District Six is doing his different. Um, he's actually got a committee together and gonna put the projects together and they're gonna be scored and awarded to the communities. I am, I was asked to be on that committee along with three other mayors, so I will be on that committee. I will excuse myself when we vote for Walton Hills, but the other mayors will have to do the same thing, so.
No, 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 no.
Um, I'm just waiting for the details from Cynthia Mason, uh, who works with Jack Schron, so. But we did submit our application on September 2nd, before September 2nd. So I think we, I, I'm hoping we did that. I think we're gonna do well. I mean, it certainly is needed and I know his thinking was, not only did he want, he wanted all that money that they distribute to impact not just the people of that community, but the people of Cogga County, we certainly can say that would impact more than just the residents of Walton Hills, so we felt that was a good project and I know everybody here felt the same way. So just wanna, so that's the only thing I have.
Hey, Paul Draper?
Yes?
Uh, just two questions in the comment. The comment is, I also want to congratulate Councilman Spitznagle and the rec committee on this $48,000 grant award for the park. Well-needed and well-deserved and sure can go to great use. And the questions I have is related to the, um, the sidewalk grant application. That sidewalk is same size as what the draft, is that when, when our engineers put our package, or is that level of detail required?
Yeah, I couldn't tell, I'm sure it's a standard, anytime they, they do it, they do a standard sidewalk that meets all the requirements. Because I think it even has to meet ADA requirements as far as someone with a wheelchair and stuff. Yeah, so I don't think it had that much detail at this time, right? But that's, you know.
And in a dollar value.
What's that?
In a dollar value.
The, how they're they're gonna give, there's gonna be, he's gonna have two rounds, okay, and it's gonna be two hu, for that grant's 250,000. That total project is 900 and something thousand, okay? So we're looking for other places too, so. And we might even talk a little bit about that with economic development, so.
Thank you.
Pretty sure it was 250,000. We haven't met yet. He was waiting for all the applications and then the committee's gonna meet, the committee hasn't met yet, so. I'm just, we haven't gotten the full details on how it's gonna be completely structured, so. Looking forward to being on the committee though. Any other questions related to item F, 2022-23, Community Parks Recreation and Conservation Project Grant? Okay, Jeff, yeah, I'll, I'll let you guys come up. I just want to let, we put that on there because it's good practice and we don't, in case the application needs us to accept the grant. So to the residents, it's on there because any grant we get, the legislative body should accept the grant. So that's what, why it's on there. Go ahead, Jeff, you want to come?
Jeff Alexander, 7312 Walton Road. I don't know if we touched on it, is the RC track gonna go back the way it was?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, you can address it, Brian.
The way it is right now is there is going to be a half-court basketball court. We, the mayor spoke to two of the members last week and it is going to be positioned on the north side.
Where it is now, the basketball hoop's already down there.
Yeah, the basketball hoop's already down there and the gray paint, so it doesn't, you know, blend in with the white paint. But the committee's thinking is if we could get another portion of that, because we're originally gonna put a pickleball court or two on that spot also. But if we can get, get that area, another area resurfaced, we can stay away from the RC track. See what I mean? Right now the basketball, uh, the half-court is going to go there. Now, Ms. Allen, uh, at our committee meeting just a little while ago said that there were some people asking for, uh, what the prospects were for a full court, basketball court. And, uh, we didn't really agree with putting a full court and infringing on the area with a full court. But as we said, there's always other grants that we can go for, we can apply for. Uh, I applied for two or three Cleveland Cavs grants for a full court basketball court and got shot down at the time. Uh, but we can always keep submitting to other places and if we get money to do another court elsewhere, we'd be glad to do that.
Has there ever been like a survey to see how many people usually batting cages? Are those the teams that rent these, the diamonds?
Yeah, usually it's, yeah, it's the team, you know, coach goes in there with the, with his team, sets up the machine and then they run each batter through. It's actually, um, the gentleman that has the fields now that is running the fields, he was willing to put a machine down there for anybody to use at any time. So it would be down there, all you'd have to do is plug it in and go ahead and use it. So it would be, you know, it'd be good for anybody at any time, the way, the way he explained it anyway, so.
On the tennis courts too, has there ever been a survey, how many people play tennis or would use it?
Uh, yeah, there, there was a, a survey. We, we did do a survey and there was, there was strong interest with that. There was more interest in pickleballs. That's why we're gonna re, repaint that as dual-purpose tennis and pickle with the, uh, the net actually goes up or down, winds up or down depending on what, what sports you're playing. So that area also is going to be a multi-use area.
Question about the sidewalks going north. That'd be quite an endeavor, across car rollers, the gas station. It's gonna be a real difficult problem, the sidewalks.
Maybe it will help clean that area up, wouldn't that be nice?
Yeah, it'd be good, but there's had to be some kind of, uh.
It might, it might give, it might help clean that area up.
Right, and really the guard rail, I don't think there's enough room to put a sidewalk there going north past car rollers. Doesn't appear to.
Or the branch?
Yeah.
May have to be.
It looks like everything would have to be moved east.
Sidewalk might have, it might need its own, uh, structure on the outside. You've seen that before, I mean, other, other villages do it. And if we get grant money to do it, I'm sure that it can be done.
I, I think we can all agree that that corridor needs to be cleaned up. A sidewalk not only brings safety to, to people walking in that corridor, it will also give us an opportunity probably to clean it up a little bit. Maybe there'll be some a little more greenery. You know, we got some opportunities moving forward here. I think that as the redevelopment of the corner continues and, and this council and this administration explorers will be be able to talk about more of that as we move forward, so it's, um, it won't be taking good money and putting it in a bad place. There's, there's some meaning to our madness. It's gonna help clean up that corridor. It's, a lot of, a lot of things are, are needed in our industrial area.
No, what about from floor?
It takes money to do it and, um, we're seeing that, some of that's gonna be, gonna be happening here.
What about the Ford plant, from, from Ford plant to MGM, is that sidewalk?
They're, yeah, they're doing that. That's on the plans.
Okay, that's.
The developer's gonna take care of that, yes. They've, they've already agreed, they're in favor of that. When, um, even before we were talking about it, before they even submitted this first set of plans and, uh, you know, we've had things happen there that are sad with people walking the street, they were contacted and, and they want to make, you know, they, they want a sidewalk there too, they agree with us. And they, and they have it on their plan, so we're real happy about that. It went through the planning commission, the preliminary plans with a sidewalk. They're gonna be coming to us with the final plans, we're hoping soon here, um, for their first billing. As you can see there, that, that, we've already, the planning commission already issued a grading permit and a footer permit. So they'll be putting the footers in soon and they're gonna be coming to us for the rest of it. As you know, um, they have a lot of money invested just with what they've been doing so far with it, with the grading. They've had about 50 people working there on a regular basis there. I did wanna, oh, go ahead Karen, yeah. No, you gotta come up, unfortunately. No, I'm sorry.
Is our feet still working? The feet?
As far as I see, the feet is working.
Just comment.
Medical tape.
Hi, Sharon Remming, 17595 Alexander Road. This is just FYI, does Walton Hills, do we have any more baseball teams at all? Not our own.
No, our, we've only had a few people sign up over the years, Karen, and you, you know how if we don't have enough for our own team, then we have to, we put them on.
Dole them out.
Yeah, we put them on.
That's, that's fine. And then we're basically renting our areas other than getting possibly that picking machine which we have one now, I thought.
Yeah, we have a couple.
No, find two of them. I think we have only one of them. Okay, so we don't have.
Two when I was using them.
No, there's two.
One soft ball and one hard ball.
Oh, okay, that's a different study. Okay, so we don't have any kids playing ball in them anymore?
No. Most of them, you know, and, and we're not the only community that struggles with that. It's not a struggle. It's not a struggle, it's just a thing. A lot of kids play travel baseball now, they don't play rec programs. Unless you're in the larger cities and stuff, you know, the rec programs still have a decent amount. But it, you know, a lot of the suburban areas, the kids play travel. Not as, it's, it's.
But they got a third summer though.
Yeah, well, they. Yeah.
Well.
That's all I wanted, we, we have any kids.
We wish, we wish we had, our, now, what we, this year was kinda, normally we, our fields are leased at to Player's Eye, which is in the village, there's a business in the village that is a baseball academy. Okay, it's called Player's Eye, it's right on North Field.
Right.
And, right, and he leased, but then we had a resident who has a, a couple of travel teams, he's with, organization lives in the village here and he's been leasing the fields too.
So that, that kitchen in the middle of the field, that's not being used or utilized?
No, but we wanna use it, cause we want, certainly wanna bring community days back. A lot of the communities have brought their community days back and I think we wanna do that too.
Can we get a grant for that?
We won't need to, hopefully we're gonna get, the way the economic development is going, we're gonna have more jobs here and, and other ways of gaining income. I, I think we're really moving in a great direction. So.
And Mr. Mayor?
But we'll still take the grants if.
And, and since I got the mic, heads up to Natalie and Mary with the trips. I'm so pleased that we offer, the rec department offers those trips, because tomorrow I'm going on one, I wouldn't be doing that by myself anymore. And, you know, that's good for all the ladies that wanna get on the bus with that, so keep that up, that's great, thank you, who's ever, you know.
I did wanna tail on to what, Jeff, what you said earlier, you were talking about pickleball. Natalie did mention that they're gonna have pickleball classes, like, you know, for people to sign up, cause it is getting real popular. It was just another article, I think it was in Cranes or whatever, but so she's gonna have, we're just looking for a place to, might do it in our event center, you know. So learn how to play. And that way, when our place comes, you know, so that's gonna take place too. But you know, the tennis courts, people have asked us about those tennis courts over the years and there is sometimes people playing on them and we locked them up last year and that was unfortunate, cause some people were still trying, you know, even playing on them, so.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
To go off of Mrs. Remming's. Yeah, not Mrs. Nielsen, Mrs. Remming's. I called her Mrs. Nielsen one night.
I got home all the locks were closed.
And, you know, there was a time, you know, Ms. Allen grew up in the village, you know, there were a lot of kids here. Now, you know, then the years progressed, you know, and got less and less, our kids are gone and there, there was just a shortage of, of young adults in the village, but you know what? Myself, Mr. Nielsen, Jennifer Allen, we walked around last year, met new people and guess what? There's kids coming into this village, young kids and young, young adults. We got a couple right over here, across the streets, on Walton Road, over there on McClellan. We met some new couples and, yeah, new, young couples. So I, I, I think, you know.
Right on Alexander too, with a couple of small children.
Give them three, four years here and we should start to see some new spring.
It's a big part of it.
Oh, we had families, yeah, we had, yeah, that's what we saw.
No talking from back there, yeah.
Yeah. That's why I called you Mrs. Yeah, but it's, I'm, we were pleasantly surprised at, at what we saw in the village, you know, with, with new families moving in.
But, and, and to get back to the grant, just real quick, so it's, we kinda, so I know the committee talked about it quite a bit and there's gonna be a, a lot of thought that goes into there, you know. One thing we know about, I know about this council and, and, and our employees, they spend their, the money, the village's money well. And so I know a lot of thought will go into it and it will be well planned and, and we'll make the most of that grant and whatever money we put forward into it. So I think everybody's gonna be, I think everybody's gonna be a winner in that, okay? You know, there is no, you know, you, you have people that use the racetrack, you have the tennis courts, we're looking for the basketball, the pickleball, the walkway, that was something that got a little momentum cause people, believe it or not, started saying, Mayor, when you really look at it, what's used the most up there? And it's really the walkway and that, it wasn't even talked about before. You know, it's funny how then people start to hear about this and this and they think, well, I don't use either one, but I use the walkway, what about me? So I just think everybody's gonna be, everybody in the village is gonna win from that. It's gonna be, it, it's such a beautiful park, we all know that, we all know it's underused and we all wanna use it more. There's just no doubt about it. I think the rec committee and council is, is looking forward to being, making that grant happen and everything, so. And, and I know myself, I, I met with two of the race car drivers in the last two or three weeks and explained all that, explained that it's all, it's all gonna be good, it's gonna be good for everybody, so. Okay? Any, anybody else have any questions related to item F? Okay, any questions related to anything before we move on to other business? Okay. I don't have anything at this time on other, other business, any council members have anything on their, other, other business?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I know I spoke briefly with you about this, but I did have a couple of calls from several other residents now about our industrial area and vehicles that look like they're abandoned there. And I think it was George Smarigan, it might have been, that had recommended with the new development going in that we really need to get the rest of our industrial areas cleaned up as much as possible and stuff, so. I know you said you were gonna be having a meeting and I'd be happy to attend, you know, whenever you do have that meeting and stuff with chief, so. Just to express the concerns of those residents.
Well, as you know, we have been going in those areas and issuing citations. Cause I know that right away, I start to receive phone calls from business owners and stuff. But I know, yes, I, I talked to you and we are gonna schedule a meeting with the chief and that, and John with you on that too, to talk about that, just cause there's a lot of logistics with, with that, we wanna do it right, so. But there, I agree, there's, there's concerns there.
Mr. Mayor, the only other thing I had is, and maybe I should be scheduling a meeting with chief, actually. I've had quite a few calls this summer from residents on a variety of streets and I can't even remember all of them offhand about speeding. Alexander, Walton, Sagamore, Woodlake, McClellan, North Meadow Park, Egberts. I mean, it's, it's certain areas of those roads, some of it's not, some, some of them, so some of those roads, I've had multiple calls from different residents.
Right.
You know, and stuff on, but, yeah, maybe I need to talk to chief instead.
Well, yeah, I know, here's, I mean, I, I, I say that with everybody here, even as, as residents. If, especially if there's a high, you know, we see an increase in it, yeah, let, let me know or let the chief know and then we make our presence and, you know, the police to make their presence and, and try to stop those violators. And then, you know, go to another street if it is, I mean, they look at that or, and we also have the mobile sign that we move around to monitor speeds too, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, so any, any certain areas, I, I know a lot of times you guys talk to the chief and I have no problem with that and he takes care of it. So it's, it's all good, I mean, we, we got a great police department and a good chief that responds, so. Yeah, just whatever, whatever ones, if you wanna prioritize them and then you can either forward them to the chief or I can, I, I have no problem with that.
I will let you know that I've noticed when I'm heading westbound on Alexander, the first flashing sign that you come to there.
Yeah.
It's really the only one on Alexander. People will slow down as they're coming up to that sign and go thirty or thirty-two miles an hour and as soon as they're past that sign, that's it. Right back down on the gas.
Well, it's the same by the camera.
Oh, yeah.
Most people.
Yes.
And I do know that there are, at times, you know, officers strategically placed, you know, one way or the other passing the camera, which they should be, because, you know, people are speeding, they're speeding. And they're not doing thirty-six.
No.
Miles an hour.
No.
They're doing fifty miles an hour.
Right.
That's a danger.
And that's a downfall of having a nice road. I, I'll never forget how many years we put up with Sagamore Road, remember how bad Sagamore Road was? And the residents on Sagamore Road complained to us legitimately to fix Sagamore Road and that was a very big undertaking with getting all the communities on board. And it got paved within two weeks, guess what the number one complaint was? Everybody's speeding on Sagamore Road after they got rid of all the chuckles, cause it was nice and smooth, you know, so. But yeah, that's not a problem, I'll, I'll talk to the chief and he can contact you or, and we'll go from there. Mr. Nielsen, did you?
Yeah.
Were you done, Jennifer?
Well, I just wanted to say, one of the residents pointed out that back in the day, Walton Hills was known for do not speed through at all, ever. And I shared with the resident, I was a freshman in high school and I was dating my grandmother's paper boy who lived in Southern Hills and Normandy High School was teaching driver's ed and telling kids, do not speed and Walton Hills. And nobody else knew where that was, except this one boy that I was dating, you know, at the time, so. So it was kind of nice being, you know, having that reputation, keeping our streets safe.
Mr. Behensky, he was famous.
But that, that's all I have.
All right.
Well, I just, just before, you know, and I'm glad you brought it up, but I was just gonna mention the fact that I had talked to chief and Chief Chawarski, he did put up a couple of signs, you probably noticed them there on North Meadow Park where the, the speed, twenty-five mile an hour, he put the yellow, slow down, he, he put those up. He has another portable speed camera flashing sign he has ordered and we're gonna be getting that. The one that, that they had, I guess they had problems with, so he has, he, we're gonna get another one. And he's gonna set that up around the village, so. A lot of the people who speed, unfortunately, are from the village. And maybe if we put something in the, in the journal and.
I did.
We could find that out.
I put, this, this month's journal, I put in an art, a thing from me and the chief, asking the residents to slow down. Second or third page.
Like a big, like on the front page, please.
It's not the same as the ticket.
No, no, but.
Unfortunately, but I did, I did put it in the, yeah, it's in the, in the bottom of it.
Stan's aware, Stan's aware of the situation, I mean, so, and it is North Meadow Park and, and I have had residents coming to me here, especially in the last couple of weeks through north, from North Meadow Park and from Woodlake, those seem to be the cut throughs.
Right.
Spanhurst, North Meadow Park and Woodlake, so.
You can't go fast enough.
Yeah, my mailbox has been almost taken out several times from people going through the stop sign.
Well, right around.
Making the curb and they, they go too fast and end up in, people have ended up in my grass.
Right around the corner, there's been one mailbox been taken out three times, so.
All right, well, I'll have the, have the chief address that.
Well, he, he's aware, you know.
Yeah, but that's.
Here, it's happening in every community.
Yeah. Well, I'm looking out in the audience here, so maybe these are kinda some of the.
Some of the speeders.
Yeah.
We're looking at these two.
No one's accusing anybody.
That rap, that's a lead foot, that's.
Any other, other business?
Uh, Mr. Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry. Two things, first of all, would you mind if I read the, the report from the.
Oh, no, not at all, I don't know.
I did provide this to the committee members and our feed went down towards the end of our meeting when I was gonna read this, this is a, was given to me by Natalie Buck, our recreation director. The summer camp, let's see, the summer camp survey went out to all the parents who participated at the end of the camp. They've received thirteen responses to date. Special events, well, the community at TG Young Park, that was August thirty-first, approximately a hundred and fifty people attended. They hired Kona Ice Truck for snow cone treats, their, the Halloween hayride at TG Young Park. That's gonna be Saturday, October eighth, from six-thirty to nine-thirty PM. Halloween party at the community center, Sunday, October thirtieth, from five to seven PM. New recreation programs, walking club program, weekly, Wednesdays at nine AM, they have thirteen people registered so far. Walk your dog program, weekly, Fridays at nine AM, three people are registered. Line dance class, weekly, Thursdays at six-thirty PM, eighteen people are registered so far. That was one of those things that a lot of people requested and they came back on that survey for line dancing. New bus trips tomorrow, and as was stated, there's a bus trip tomorrow to Gervasi Vineyard tasting and tour. Thirty-four people are registered.
Grape juice only, that's.
Grape juice, yes. Sarah's Vineyard and Zalae's, I don't know how to pronounce this. Zalae's Farm Market Trip, September twenty-first, there are two, twenty-two people registered with the waitlist. Patterson Farms and Brunch Trip, October thirteenth, ten people have registered. The Mizraab Playhouse Trip, October fifteenth, eight people are registered. A Christmas Carol Playhouse Trip, December seventh, sixteen people are registered. And Beetlejuice Playhouse Trip, January twenty-eighth, three people are registered. So that's what's going on in the recreation department, thank you. Mr. Mayor? And one more item I had, we all got it, the email from that gentleman again about that, and, and I had spoke too briefly about it before, about the.
Backyard.
By TG Young Park, back in the woods, or stuff that's been there for decades, some of that stuff's been there for years and years and years. But I, I don't know if we wanna look into getting somebody hiring part-time people to just go back there and get rid of it, I don't know, I've not seen it visually myself, so I really don't know how much stuff is back there or what, but I think just for the environment, something should be done at some point to, to clean up that area and I know you know, in the past, some people back there in the industrial district just shove the stuff over, I, you know, we're aware of that. But I, I think to be environmental and friendly, whether we just get some people just for that job or back to county jail program as the worker leads programs. See if we can get something like that, but I, I think something at some point should be.
What's concerning is that, that has gotten worse since May.
Yeah.
Hey, Carl Graf?
Yeah.
If, if I may add to that, I, yeah, as Brian, Councilman Spessnigle stated, some of the, some of that debris has been there for decades and have come from various sources. You know, in my email reply today, I did, I included in there that there's several property owners that's involved. But that stream, from my understanding, is part of the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District, their regional stormwater network. So it's not, you know, it would be nice to just send some crews up there, but that responsibility is with the sewer district. So I was successful today, reaching. So I was successful today, reaching out to the sewer district after I talked with Commissioner Kalman, found out he was off today, I did reach out and they have the pictures. Sewer district has the pictures and the person that I talked to said, Ray, we will get back to you right away. There, there were some personnel changes, Miring Portraits, who was our-
Is gone.
Is gone, but his replacement is in place and we actually just, that was settled today as well. So I do anticipate hearing back from the sewer district and then connecting them with Rob Kalman to try to coordinate that sooner than later. And I actually talked to a real person today.
That's a good thing.
Not a voice note.
Yeah.
Good. When me, Ray and Rob talked about that, what, we had a meeting that-
Right.
With other issues at that time and what happened, Miring Portraits left, then they had an interim, who was filling in and now, you know, things have changed, so. Because that's not the only issue, we have other issues that need to be addressed, but that office was in a transition period, so. Hopefully that will move forward, so thank you, Ray, for that too.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Are there any signs around there on the, in the industrial area that says no dumping?
No, that, those areas, that's, this is in people's backyards and their prop, private property. That's why it's-
It's real touchy.
Mm-hmm, it's, it's, it's their property.
I understood.
You know, some of that stuff is-
That's not, see, I don't know the extent of where these pictures were taken and things like that. So that's all on private property?
Well, you, you have the, well, so the way, yeah, it, it, the way it kind of works is the, the stream itself is, falls on their private property. The sewer district does, their, their degree of cleaning and making sure that the stream flows properly.
Right.
I think what the mayor's alluding to is that, and I, and I could, I've seen this in other places, not just here, that sometimes people on their private property don't mind things being, coming off of their property for whatever reason, you know, so it, it takes a coordination to get authorization to go on people's property to remove debris sometimes. And that's where the sewer district can come in and help with that coordination as well as a tinkers creek watershed.
Right.
They will work together to try to, and perhaps EPA if necessary, to coordinate all of that to help us to get that area cleaned up. And, and, you know, if, then, if, if it, I'm thankful Mr. Cardo sent those pictures because, you know, if there is a capacity assurance issue making, you know, meaning water needs to be able to get through that stream, that puts it into another-
Level, yeah.
Realm of review, so all of that is being reviewed, reviewed, you know, currently by the sewer district and they'll get back to us promptly, so.
Yeah, we're concerned about it, we want it to be done, it's just, you know, gotta go through the channels, so. But now that they have somebody in, in Miring's place, I think that will make a difference and he did a good job, but he moved on and now they have someone else. So, and then he had an interim, made it tough, so. So good, yeah, we'll see, see what happens, I'll keep you, keep you informed. Any other business, any other business?
I'm gonna give a, I'm gonna give a very brief update, I know-
Oh, okay.
I spoke to Jennifer finance-wise, but I forgot we have a committee meeting next week, so we'll go in depth and I'll give you month-over-month comparison. July for sure, if I can, I'll get August squeezed in there, but I'm not gonna promise August. Just, so just some general updates, auditors are getting wrapped up pretty soon, I've got Jessica coming in Thursday just to sit with me, we've got a few more things that we needed to tackle. And then we did receive our final determination from the state of Ohio on the property tax exemption at the event center. So talk about a slow-moving process, two years ago, I realized paperwork was either done and lost and pushed aside or never properly completed to make sure that we would receive exemption on that and, and then there's a plat behind it, we split it out into two plats. So lots of things that had to be submitted just to show our use and make sure that we have a community and our main use is community and not profit in that building. So we've got the determination that it would be granted exemption status and that status stays with it until something would change or until the county thinks there's activity going on that they would need to reevaluate. So that also means that retroactively to the years that, you know, I believe we purchased in sixteen, we were messing around in seventeen, getting it ready and up and running by eighteen. So we will potentially receive some money back even that would have already been paid if the refunds paid in, you know, when we purchased it on that, that year that it was purchased, because there was an exemption granted. So I have no idea what amount that would be, but if we got some money back, that would be great and the fact that we don't owe money is also great. So that's one positive thing we had going there for us. And then just a quick little synopsis of some numbers, I'm, I'm still tweaking some stuff. The credit card is like the bane of my existence, right, so I'm looking at everything and a big chunk of our transactions are on these credit cards. You know, there's at least seventy-five plus transactions in my credit cards, I, I don't have an answer yet on how to mitigate this or what we can do to shore it up, but I'm writing maybe ten to fifteen checks a week, twenty on a hot week or if I, you know, skipped a week. And so we're doing more and, and now volume-wise, money-wise, that's not to say there's more because I'm paying on big jobs for things like that and roads, but it, just the volume of putting this credit card transactions in is killing me, so I've just got a little bit of tweaks to do. So, but right now, where we stand, income tax through July, I do have August already in, but through July, we are up eight point nine percent. So we have already received seventy-six point nine five percent of what we anticipated in our budget for the year in taxes as of July. So that, we've still got how many more months to go, last year at this time, we were at about seventy point seven eight percent. So that to me is like amazing, we've gotten a lot of calls, we did have a handful of refunds for people that went to work at home, but we've gotten more calls for people that are working from home that live here in the city. So knock on wood, we are so thankful, we are not, not only didn't take a hit from COVID, we're at home right now, but the way we're structured with industry in our village and then with other people doing things from other companies remote in their home, we are, you know, getting more taxes and we've collected more this year, so we didn't really suffer much last year either in terms of thinking that maybe some individuals who would have been laid off may have filed late or not, not filed, but so I'm, I'm really pleased that we're on par with taxes. I did go in July to the OML tax conference, was finally in person again. So one of the pieces I picked up there, that's pretty important to know, is that we can use the auditor state for collections. So, you know, when the time comes, I don't think people owe us a million dollars by any means, but when the time comes that we can start shoring up some collections and stuff for mayor's court as well, we can use the auditor of state for that and send things over to them so that they can actually go after that money on our behalf. So there's procedures and policies there. And then also just looking forward, you know, when, when we're looking at economic development, should anybody else be looking to build or move into buildings in our city? One of the things everybody's starting to do is what's called a three-year look back. So you're gonna promise X amount of jobs, however, we have to look back three years because during COVID, did, do you now have a lot of workers that are at home to, you may not be able to meet that promise. So that's an important piece to consider, that was kind of one of my big takeaways from the conference is that, that, you know, that's a very valid point when you're gonna be offering any incentives for anyone or putting together any kind of development agreements is to have that three-year look back on what's been going on with employees and where they're, where they're housed and working. So in terms of the budget itself, we have expenses at the current time through July at about four point one five million and revenues at about four point seven four million. So our current fund balance is hanging at about three point two million, we're, that's great about where we're always at. And then I would have, that, that would put us probably about, I'm gonna go about a hundred and fifty thousand to the good, maybe a little bit more. So when I plug everything in and you've got finals next week, you'll see, and we'll have a month to month so we can see where we've been the whole time. So, so far, so good. And I'm sure a lot of that helps that we've been up on taxes too.
Right.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Well, we'll get more of that next week in our finance, in the-
Going over the numbers and just some miscellaneous topics as well, yeah.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Angela relating to that before we ask her adjournment? Any residents have any questions? Anybody streaming have any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I was asked to share with everyone, Citizens League is putting on a program on September twenty-second, right across the street here in the community room. It is a gentleman named Steve Clark, who is a licensed, he became licensed for health insurance in two thousand and three. He has his own business, Ohio Health Benefits, since two thousand and four and he can help, he's just coming as an informative, he's not trying to sell. He, he wants to answer questions for people, they can always get in touch with him if they wanted something more direct. But he can answer questions about anything with health benefits from if you're retiring, do you need to help your parents as they prepare for their retirement? Are you dealing with a death in the family and you're reconsidering your health insurance needs, do you need help with the Medicare maze? Do you need guidance going through the Affordable Care Insurance process and even are you a small business owner and need help finding coverage for employees? So it's just an informative night, again, it starts at seven P.M., he will be bringing refreshments also. It's in your owl, very nice-looking gentleman. But again, it, the big thing for us Citizens League was that they're not trying to sell anything to anybody there, they're there to answer questions and, and just, you know, kind of get you guys along the right path, so.
And it's free.
It's absolutely free, completely free.
Good deal.
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
It's at seven P.M., yep.
Okay, any other business? Well, I would like to ask for a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for a motion for adjournment.
Yeah, you come up, Don.
For the record, Don Hedo and Rochelle Drive. It's nice to see all the smiling faces here again. Hopefully, Mr. Mayor and the members of council enjoyed your summer recess, so hopefully everything is well with you and your families. I'd like to take this moment here this evening to make some comments and have some questions in regard to two specific issues facing some of the residents and many of us in Walton Hills. One of the most important ones is I'd like to have an update in regard to the fireworks issue. As I understand it, the law that was passed by the state, we decided to opt out, correct? That we opted out?
We kept ours, our existing one in place.
Okay.
And so it was the same as always, we do not allow fireworks in Walton Hills.
All right, now pertaining to that, was anything adjusted in what we already had on the books, added to?
Nothing.
Nothing.
All we did was opt out of theirs and reaffirmed ours and voted on that.
Okay, so basically we did not put any deterrents in place, correct?
We didn't need it, we don't allow it in Walton Hills.
So.
Is that, I'm sorry, Mr. Hedo, is that a-
If, if the rule or law is broken, what happens?
Don, I'd have to, I'd have to look at it, but it's, it's, hasn't changed, it's been the same since you've lived here.
Yes, but I don't know what that is.
Well, I'd have to-
Is there a-
I'll get him involved. Okay, I'll have to get back to you, we can, you can come in and get a copy of it, because I, I don't know it all and I would have to-
Right.
Ordinance, we can look it up and you don't need to look it up now. We'll, we'll get an ordinance and get you a copy of it.
Okay.
Or you can go on the computer, but if you can't go on the computer, we'll get you a copy of it.
Are you aware of any incidents that happened in breaking the law, so to speak, on July fourth in this village? Were there any complaints made and how were they addressed?
Well, as safety, as safety chairman, how, as safety officer, the chief reports to me. If I don't need to make a decision on anything, he just conducts business the same way. He didn't report anything on the ordinary that I'm aware of. Every year, our police go to different residents for the last, forever since fireworks been around because people try to blow them off and if there's complaints, our police respond. I'm not aware of anything that stood out, I don't think council is, but I can ask the chief. I'm sure we had our regulars they go to and that's it, but I, I wasn't notified of anything out of the ordinary, Don. But that doesn't mean the chief isn't, you know, if, you know, he manages his department and manages it well.
Right. Well, that's the basis, one of the bases of why I'm here this evening. On July fourth, we had a mini fireworks party in the, in the village. I mean, I'm talking about shooting skyrockets and everything up. It wasn't an open party because I don't think any of the other residents were possibly invited to it and you're not aware of that one.
I'm not knowing, the chief hasn't said anything to me, Don, it doesn't mean, you know, just like there's stuff happening right now, unless I need to make a decision or be involved in it, it goes to the chief. He might not, he doesn't get involved in everything that happens, his police officers handle it, unless it gets escalated to him. I had nothing escalated to me on July fourth. I can follow up with, with the chief and see if there was anything in particular. Is there a complaint that we not followed through on something? Is there something that you want to address? Is that?
Well, certainly, I think there should be-
Did someone call the police, they not show up, or?
No, certainly, I think another step should be taken as far as putting something on the books. I, if I recall correctly in this moment, there was items in the owl, items in what the village government puts out in regard to the paper, the month, you know, fireworks are illegal. They're not supposed to be set off in Walton Hills, but there were cases where there were and this was exceptional on North Meadow Park. Basically, Mr. Nielsen, were you home July fourth not being personal?
Yep.
And you were not aware the fireworks that were set off over there?
Yeah.
You are aware.
Yeah.
Then why didn't you do something to stop it?
What was I supposed to do? I'm a councilman, I'm not a police officer.
Well, I'm not, I'm not a police officer either.
So, so what did you want me to do?
The way I address life though, it's either right or wrong. And what was happening-
They weren't the only ones.
And what was happening was wrong.
Well, we're not gonna debate anything, let me, let me follow up, I mean, wha- what happens, if someone's committing a crime, you call the police, the police show up, okay, and they address the, the issue in their professional manner. If there's something wrong with that, then the chief needs to address that. Did the police not show up, is there something, I mean, we're not, you know, I, I will find that out if there's a complaint there.
I, I wish you would because I was there.
Okay.
I saw it, I saw a police car come up the street. I am not the only witness, I will keep that to myself right now. To one of the residents that lives in that general area walked down to see the fireworks and he wasn't even aware that they were illegal. Like I'm talking about shooting off rockets up in the air like that and loud stuff and whatever like that and that, and that sound travels. I'm no prude, but I believe in respecting the rules, that's what I play by. Whether you're playing the game or the most important game, the game of life. You have rules to attend, and the bottom line, the final answer, it's either right or wrong. And certainly, not to put any pressure on you, if that would have been me, and I'm a councilman, I have responsibility. I would have walked over to them and told them, shut it down. That's what I would have done.
Maybe I did, maybe that's why it's not-
We're not, I'm not getting into it, let's take this off like, Don, Don, a council meeting is a debate or thing. What, so you, you, you have a, you have a complaint that the police, with the police, correct? They, they were called and-
No, not necessarily, not necessarily.
What's the complaint? What's the complaint?
Basically.
Somebody had fireworks and was told to stop.
It shouldn't have happened, so it shows you the laxity of people's responsibility that were around that area or that live in the village. In fact, I took the opportunity to drive around- In fact, I took the opportunity to drive around our area. I can tell you right down, the police in Northfield were parked on Northfield Road by the dentist office and watching and hearing all this stuff going on. I took a drive down the street there by Firestone, they had their cars open up the trunks and they're passing the fireworks out from. Where's the enforcement? That's what I'm saying. Where is the enforcement?
If our, if our police have a complaint, they will, they enforce the law. I'm going to defend our police department. I'll, I will talk to the chief and I'll have the chief contact you, and you can express...
He doesn't have to contact me, all I ask for is for the people that live in this village, we've got a reputation, and hopefully it's a good one, as Ms. Allen stated. We didn't, we didn't obtain that by accident, okay? Everybody's entitled to, this is America, to live the right way, but we have rules and regulations, and why do we have that? Because we can't rely on people to do the right thing. Very simple.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
Well, I...
Don...
Pardon me, let, let me...
Make your point, Don.
Okay. So, this is what people should be living by. This is the, if, if you could rely on people always to do the right thing, or to, you know, life would be easy. You know, I've lived both ends, I'm a lot older than anybody here.
I, I agree a hundred percent, but Don, I'm going to make a point. The point I disagree with you, I agree with you, but I disagree with you.
You have a point to disagree with.
Some people aren't comfortable going to their neighbor's house and saying, don't do this anymore. Some people aren't, and they don't need to do that. They have a phone.
Correct.
They pick up the phone.
Correct.
And they call our village policeman. It is the village's responsibility to ensure that that resident is safe, and safe within the laws of the village. So they call dispatch, dispatch sends an officer over there, or two, and that officer evaluates the situation and makes a decision according to the law. Okay? To say that if my neighbor was doing it, that doesn't mean I wouldn't, I, I wish it was that way, Don, I wish, you know, somebody's dog goes in someone's yard, you can just call up and say, hey, keep your dog out of my yard, and that neighbor says, that's great, Don, I'll do that. Okay, but we all know that's not the society we live in. Some people might still decide to take that avenue, that's fine. Some people don't want to take that avenue, some people don't even want to know that they called, some people don't want their neighbor to know, the neighbor up the street, but if they're doing something, this body here and myself and this police department said, if you have any issue in the village, what do we say to do?
Call the police.
Call the police.
I did.
There you go. And the police do what? They respond to every call that goes through that dispatch. Now, they might go to that resident, say, you're not breaking the law, but you know, just keep it down a little bit, or you are breaking the law, here's the ordinance you're breaking, and here are the consequences. So my question, that's why I'm just asking you, your opinion on maybe what someone should do is fine, but what I have to find out as mayor and the chief is, did our police officers respond the way they need to respond? That's my question.
Correct.
Now, whether or not a neighbor should have called or not, that's, I, I can't, you know, I, it'd be nice if neighbors could just police each other, but you made the point, if we could just all police each other, we wouldn't even need a police department.
Well, this is, this is...
But that's not the world we live in.
The bottom line with me is, I didn't jump the gun. I wanted to see what the villagers were going to do, if they were going to honor their responsibilities.
Okay.
So I gave you a lot of rope. I didn't jump the gun, I didn't call the police right away.
No one's saying anything about you.
Huh?
I didn't say anything about you.
Well, that, that's, that, I don't see how you could say, in other words, if you were in this village, that night...
Make your point, Don.
All right, if you were in this village that night, you couldn't miss it, you say, where's that stuff coming from? Boom, sound, up in the sky. I mean, that, that's got to be right here, it's too close. So, that's what I mean, you can't be oblivious to what's going on here if you were in the village, that's my point. So I, I didn't rush the judgment, I did my homework in checking to see if it was going to be handled possibly correctly or whatever like that, if somebody was going to turn in a complaint or so on and so forth, because it shouldn't have happened, plain and simple. And then I thought, where it was? I thought of Councilman Nielsen, I just wondered if he was home and needs to know what's going on. That's my point. And here I come up here this evening, and nobody knows nothing? That doesn't bode well.
But, so anyhow, anyhow... Okay, make your point, Don.
That's right, so I would like to see personally, why don't you send a survey around maybe, and talk to the rest of our residents? Because I think a good thing to do would be to take the next step and say, okay, we got through the first time under the so-called new law, that Dewine changes mine on because what, did he get paid off or something like that? Because he was against it from the get-go. Then he changed, and then they gave the support to pass it.
No, but Don, we don't allow fireworks in Walton Hills.
Right.
So it has nothing to do with his law.
All right, but there's a lot of, but there's a lot of places that don't, and yet they happen.
So we can't control that.
This is the trend, can't you see it? This is the trend in this country. I, I've lived both the good and the bad.
Well, Don, you've got to make your point, I got executive session waiting with two people waiting...
Right now, you're not seeing enforcer, plain, plain and simple.
So, in Walton Hills, we haven't changed the law. Council voted to opt out of the state and keep it what we have in place all these years.
Okay, so...
A lot of residents who requested that.
Okay, but like, right, including myself.
Yeah.
Along with a lot of other people I spoke with.
Right.
Okay, it's not just my...
And the police chief.
I can give you a lot of backup.
Well, no, there was, we didn't, you didn't even need you guys to come, this council was already in agreement with that, along with our safety forces.
All right. Number one, it's only proper, I came up here to speak, and I hope that you would listen with an open ear.
I do, but we got a time limit.
So, again, I'm going to end it right here, but I'm going to make this comment again. I think there should be something put on the books, that if you're cited for fireworks and you break the law, you get the fine. I told you that before I came up here, I told you what some of the council people said in Lorraine, and I almost fell off my chair when she said it, first offense, one thousand dollars. That'll stop it, why waste the time of our police force and put them in jeopardy and waste our tax money? Okay?
So, you got council...
I would like to say, life can be easy, people make it difficult, and it shouldn't be that way. There again, that's why we have rules and regulations, no matter where you go.
I, I agree.
But they have to be enforced.
And I expect our police to enforce them.
So I would like to see this council, I'm making the recommendation to this council to take consideration, since there has been laws broken, because we have them on already on the books, and it's still happening, how do you stop? Does it get worse next time? Very su- very soon, very easy. You know, you mentioned about Saginaw Road in Swoon, and that's where I'm going to next one, about the guys racing the motorcycles. It happens all the time on good weather, they get out, they run them, you can hear them, and they're, they're not doing it. When they open them up and gun them, you know what a bike is doing, well over fifty, well over fifty. Okay? So why don't they set up some speed cameras or something like that and set up some stuff and nab these guys? Send them a message, because that's the only way you stop it. You see what's happening in Cleveland? With the ATMs and running around them, and they can't figure out how to stop it. Okay, second item, and I did hear some mention of Barclay Estates, which was positive. But I've lived in this village since eighty-seven, that's thirty-five years. Our streets in Barclay, the worst that they have ever been. And the reason why they are, some of these people sitting on council, including the mayor, are responsible, because you were on council when a lot of this occurred, we never had a good road program. Some of the people that were on council then are not here now, to be held accountable. Okay? And I go out every day if I can, if the good Lord allows me, to give me help, I go out. And I'm kind of jealous when I go into these other communities and they've got good roads, and what I have to put up with. And I pay taxes, that's resale value for my home, equity for everybody in Barclay Estates. So anything that we've ever had done, our roads in Barclay, it's been nothing but patchwork. This time, it's got to be addressed where it's proper. Because you can't just patchwork every time, because it doesn't hold up. So, there again, you had the opportunity. I paid my taxes, I try to be a good citizen.
Wrapping up, Don, we got to have a time limit.
Right, okay. I'll end it. You know, you don't like what I'm saying.
No, I like, I'm going to rebuttal you.
See that?
Don, we've been talking about our road program for over a year, two years, it's been in, Don, let me first rebuttal.
Go ahead.
I'm going, I'm going to rebuttal something to you, because I, I know you enjoy this, I don't. That development, that development was pushed, Don, I respected you, let me talk.
You keep interrupting me, so I think I have to say an opportunity.
Okay, finish, I, I won't, I won't, I won't...
Try to put words in my mouth that I enjoy. I got a lot of other, other things that I could do, a lot, but I could be home sitting ice cream, enjoying tennis matches.
Well, let me, let me rebuttal you.
And thinking about tennis matches.
Let, 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 let me rebut...
I know a lot of our tennis courts.
Don, let me answer, and then you can wrap it up, finish up, because I have an executive session waiting. Okay, two gentlemen waiting, okay?
Go ahead, yes.
Um, that was pushed to re, be repaved, Barclay Estates, and a lot of people, including some former residents who are now deceased, that was pushed to be repaved, and it wasn't repaved properly, and that was before I was on council, just to make the point. Okay, I wasn't on council.
You'd have to give me the year, so I could...
But, but you know, the base was never re, never repaired, and it wasn't repaved right, there was a lot of people, we had a couple paving people that lived in our, our development, that said it wasn't done right. Okay? To sit here and say that this council hasn't had a good road program, you are so far off. We've had a good road program, but no money to fund it, no money to fund it. The only reason these roads have not gotten done is because the village hasn't been able to afford a repair of the secondary roads. Not because I don't know they're bad, okay, or Ray, or Brian, or Jennifer, or, or Mary, or Fred doesn't know they're bad, it's because we haven't been able to afford it. And we have said, what do we got to do? We don't want to put all this burden on the residents, raise the taxes anymore, assess them, let's do what we can, let's tighten our belts, we got good things coming, okay? The time has come. We've tightened our belts, we put some burden on the residents, we took away the sewer, the sewer payment that the village had, you have to pay your sewer bill, we put a garbage assessment on the residents, okay, and we backed off some of the roads. We've done, we have tried to do some secondary roads every year, okay? Barclay Estates, why wouldn't I want Barclay Estates there? I live there, my son lives there, why wouldn't I want that? Okay, I'd want my neighborhood before I, that's just common, I mean, but we haven't been able to afford it, that's about a six hundred thousand dollar project, we haven't been able to afford it. We've been able to do the big main roads, because we get grants for those, we get free money, so we can't pass those up. But we've been looking at that, we've listened to the concerns, we have worked hard to stretch our money here, but still stay within budget. Not only have people like you say, hey, you need to fix our secondary roads, they also have said, mayor and council, I don't want to pay anymore, I want the village to be in the black. I want the village to be in the black, balance the budget, and this body has done that. So to balance the budget, when sometimes your expenses are exceeding your revenues, you got to cut back on things. But now, we're going to start to see some revenue coming in with the redevelopment and, and, and more jobs and construction. We, we're aware of that, Don, it's not because we haven't, the road program put out by Shergen Valley Engineer hasn't changed. They go out, they evaluate the roads, they tell us what should be done, they get estimates on certain roads, and it comes before this body, and we decide, can we afford it, or can we not? That's, that's really as simple as it's been. It's really been that simple.
No, it's not necessarily that simple. You overlook the fact that for thirty-five years that I've lived in this village, I've attended council meetings, I could tell you stories that probably you don't even know, just like the fireworks, okay? Again, when you take the oath of office, you take on that responsibility, you find a way. Could we have not had bond issues? Sold bonds? There's always a way. Other, other places got similar problems, they get it done though, don't they? They get it done. That's a responsibility every one of you take on.
Now, you have...
And you have my backing, you have my backing, okay? You have my backing, I'm supportive, but you know yourself, under previous administrations, it was them arguing back and forth under Nelson and everything, just like the school issue. I was the only one in this village that came and stood before council and said, it will never happen, and we spent millions of dollars, why didn't you listen to me? I don't think to be the smartest guy walking the circuit, but when I make common sense, listen.
Wrap it up, Don. I don't mean it's...
It's done. I didn't come here to argue tonight, you started it, I will finish it. But I expect, I expect some results. I expect some results.
Did you hear what we talked about tonight with, with Barclay Estates?
Very little, you touched on it very little.
What did, what did we say? What did we say? What did we touch on?
All I know is there's something possibly in the works, but not being specific. And let me just touch on this, as far as, because I wasn't aware of this, this is the first time I've been to this meeting in quite some time, because of summer recess and whatever. Let's not build a sidewalk to nowhere. I know that corridor needs some improvement, no question about it. But where's, where are the sidewalks going to be? You mentioned about Deed Runaway, are you going to put a sidewalk tentatively in the plans from north to south or vice versa, on their side of the street, and then around the corner going toward Schuman, then the bridge? Where's it going to go? It's a sidewalk to nowhere. It will provide protection for the people that are not walking in the street in Walton Hills. That's a positive. Maybe you eliminate that liability, but what's it going to be? The sidewalk to nowhere. Unless you get Northfield as a continuance, right? And down the other side, where are we going to go with it? So only improvement, now that I see, briefly, is yes, we're eliminating some possibilities of, uh, uh, we're accountable, if something actually say, well, I can put a sidewalk, walk on, this car come by and hit, then we're going back to the speeding again. Address it. Put some penalties out there, let's get these people. If they're not living within the law, the same as the fireworks penalty.
Does one sidewalk justify one fatality? In my book, it does.
You can say that.
If it was my son or daughter, or if it was my neighbor that lost their life, you can't put a price on it, I don't care what that sidewalk costs.
But you got, for example, you have people in Orange Village, that's even more upscale than Walton Hills, and they're against that.
What are you going to do when there's twenty-five hundred jobs up there at that corner, and people want to walk to the bus stop?
I, I say yes, it absolutely...
Do we want to, do we want to...
I'm not against...
Don, let's wrap it up a nice way, they're waiting here for economic development.
Well, let's get, let's get some continuation is what I'm saying.
You're welcome to, I got an open door policy, you're welcome to see me anytime you want.
The what?
You're welcome to see me anytime you want, I got an open door policy, and you're always welcome to any of these meetings.
Mr. Mayor?
There's nobody around that's going to, there's not a meeting around, this council's been asking me to put a time limit, limit on everybody, you've talked for almost forty-five minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, if people would just stay quiet and allow me to make my presentation... Well, if people would just step quiet and allow me to make my presentation, I would have been out of here. But you see, this is what I got to deal with. You know, I didn't come up here to argue.
Mr. Mayor?
I don't come up here to argue. That was never my intent.
Don, I just gave you my opinion, you gave me yours. That's not an argument.
And you're entitled to yours.
Thank you, and you're entitled to yours.
But basically, I don't think a meeting should be one like this, plain and simple. We're right back to old school under Nelski, and you were part of it.
Mr. Mayor?
See, I've seen both sides. I speak from fact. I don't speak from fiction. I never will. I got more pride in myself. So when I say something, I would appreciate your respect. Good night.
Don, I gave you respect, but I'm passionate about it too, when you insult me or you attack me. I never attacked you. I'm just passionate. I love the village, so I'm passionate about it. Well, thank you. Have a good evening. You too. I'll let you know about the fireworks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I'm sure Mr. Nielsen might have the answer, but my understanding is the only sidewalk in the village of Walton Hills was put in after someone was killed in that area.
Exactly.
Yeah, we don't need to expound it.
No. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion
Yes, go ahead.
To adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, vote on the motion.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
We're staying in here, man?
Yes.
Are we staying in here?
We're staying in here. I'm going to let, yeah, tell them to shut
Oh, you got to start your meeting.
We have to start the other meeting first.
Start the meeting.
Oh, yeah. Let's start the meeting first. We got to start the meeting. Here we go. Okay. So that meeting ended at eight, is Matt still here? Yeah. That meeting ended at 8:53 PM. Okay. We're going to start the special council meeting. They'd like to welcome everybody to the special council meeting of Tuesday, September 6, 2022, at 8:54 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Nielsen?
Here.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Here.
Councilwoman Allen?
Here.
Councilman Whedon?
Here.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Here.
All council present, along with our loss listener, John Montello, and our fiscal officer, Angela Rabe. Okay, can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the VZA appointment, economic development at 7845 Northfield Road and 7676 Northfield Road, personnel, finance department, and the recreation department.
Second.
Second, vote on the motion.
Second from Mr. Whedon, um, Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Okay, for the residents that are here, when we reconvene back from, uh, uh, our executive session, there will not be any legislation. We will just make a motion to reconvene and then adjourn the meeting. So thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Maybe for you.
Yeah.
I've known him for 30 something years.